Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. For June 25th at 6:01. Okay, just to go over some items on the agenda, or before we get to the agenda, just in regards to the public comments during this COVID-19 emergency. This meeting is in compliance with the Governor's executive order N25-20 issued on March 4th, 2020, and N29-20 issued on March 18th of 2020, allowing for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide a safe environment for the staff and the public to conduct city business while allowing for public participation during the COVID-19 global emergency. This meeting will be held by teleconference. The public may watch the meeting via a livestream, and that has been posted on the website. Yes?
Yes.
The public participation, the City of Hollister Council chambers will be open to the public during the meeting, however, in accordance to this executive orders of N25-20 and N29-20, and guidance from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings regarding social distancing, seating will be limited, and on first come, first served basis. In accordance with the executive orders N25-20 and N29-20, and guidance from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings, remote public participation is allowed and public comment time may be limited. If you wish to make a public comment remotely during this meeting, you may use Zoom and register to the link that has been provided on the website. Okay. All right, so we'll call verification of the agenda posting.
Good evening. The agenda for the Thursday, June 25th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting was posted on Friday, June 19th, 2020, at 4:50 PM.
Great, thank you, Brian. And if we will, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I will call for real call.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Hugh Boy has an excused absence. Chairperson Munzer.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Henderson.
Here.
Great, thank you, Brad. And if we've all had a chance for to review the approval and vote for the approval of the minutes. Will somebody entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes?
I'm with a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting, I believe it was January was our last meeting, is that right?
Correct, January 23rd.
January 23rd.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's motion and second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. All right, at this time, communications from the public on items not listed on the agenda. This is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any items not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. When the planning commission calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and speak to the commission. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Please note that the state law prohibits the planning commissions from discussing or taking action on an item not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards for items not on the agenda?
There are not.
Great, thank you. So at this time, we'll move on to the public hearings. First item on the agenda, Site and Architectural Review Number 2019-21, and if staff can give us the report.
Okay. And then Paul, if you could just, thank you so much. Alrighty, thank you Chairperson Munzer. The first item on the agenda is Site and Architectural Review 2019-21. The applicant is requesting Site and Architectural Approval for the construction of a 151,000-square-foot concrete tilt-up building on about 11.3 acres of a total 40.51-acre site. No development is currently proposed on the remaining portion of the project site. The floor plan of the building proposes to be a shell building at this time, but there will be future tenant improvements that are consistent with the M1 Light Industrial Zoning District and Airport Support zoning districts. The building is intended to house a smart glass manufacturing company, which is consistent with the current zoning, and it would handle and process glass that's manufactured at a different facility, and no glass would be manufactured at this site. The project was previously approved by the planning commission at its meeting of June 29th, 2017, per Resolution 2017-16, and the prior approval has since expired. So the applicant has contacted the city and is requesting approval from the planning commission to proceed forward with the project with a new application, but it's important to note that this approval tonight is in accordance with all relevant regulations that are presently in effect, as it's a new application for consideration rather than an extension of that previous approval. And the proposed building would be up to 36 feet in height, and the stair enclosures to the roof are about 42 feet in height, which is consistent with our zoning. It's a single-story building overall, and it's a concrete tilt-up building, which will be painted and stuccoed and have LED lighting throughout. The eastern elevation, which you see on your screen, and just so you know, it's a very long building, so the top is of your screen is gonna be the entire building, and then I've split it in half for you to zoom, zoom in a little bit on the bottom two pictures. So the eastern elevation that we're looking at now faces San Felipe Road and contains multiple storefront window systems with entry points in several locations across the approximately 840-foot frontage, and there's multiple steel awnings located above some of the storefront areas, and the building contains various articulations and recessed areas to break up the facade throughout. Moving on to the north elevation, this would face the newly constructed Burt Drive extension, and this would be the main point of access for the project. The storefront windows and steel awnings wrap around about half of this elevation from the eastern elevation on the San Felipe side. The western elevation, again, same kind of layout on my PowerPoint slide, the long full thing is on the top there, and then the bottom two is split in half. And this also has a steel awning running the majority of its length, which covers the walkway on this side of the building, and there are storefront windows on either end and smaller windows located above the awning along the central sections of the building. Finally, the southern elevation contains one storefront entry and two man doors, and it also has six loading docks, and the loading dock doors are depressed into the ground, into the grade of the elevation, so that truck deliveries can roll right up, and then there's also two on-grade roll-up doors, as you can see. San Felipe Road, which is at the top of your screen, but so we're oriented north, is gonna be to the left side of the screen. San Felipe Road is our primary vehicular access to the site, and there would be a new primary access on San Felipe Road, which is about 1,200 feet north of the current access. So if you look at your screen, on the right side, there is a exit-only area, and that's kind of where the current access to the site is, but the new Burt Drive extension would be at the northernmost side of this site. The Burt Drive extension is planned to extend into the neighboring industrial park, and it will align with the future Burt Drive on the eastern side of San Felipe as that property develops in the future. There will be deceleration lanes on San Felipe Road for truck traffic that's entering the development on the southbound lane, and acceleration lanes would be required for truck and vehicular traffic exiting the project and traveling north on San Felipe Road. The current access on San Felipe Road, which serves agricultural businesses today, would operate as the secondary exit-only access to the Clearest Park site. On-site circulation includes two 26-foot-wide drive aisles on the east and west side of the building, and again, acceleration lanes would be required for truck traffic exiting this access and traveling north onto San Felipe Road. There will be LED fixtures dispersed throughout the project parking areas and pedestrian pathways to provide lighting throughout the project. There are 382 parking stalls and 12 ADA parking stalls, and as well as eight EVC charging vehicle stalls. There are 25 bicycle parking stalls. There is a requirement per municipal code, 400 square feet of floor area, for every 400 square feet of floor area of the building, we need one parking space, and so there are 378 required vehicle parking spaces and 19 required bicycle parking spaces. So the applicant is exceeding and meeting the parking requirements. And the project site would be landscaped in the areas that are shaded on your screen, so along the San Felipe and Burt frontage, as well as a small strip of area along the southern side of the property, and that's just gonna be kind of shrubs and grasses and ground cover, as indicated on the plans. The project has about 91,000 square feet of landscaped area, which is about 18.5% of the site, and our project requirement is 10% minimum, so that 18% is exceeding our landscaping requirements in the industrial zone. There was a previous environmental impact report for this project, or for actually for a larger industrial airport terminal business park project in May of 2000, and that was to build a tentative map for this area for airport and industrial uses. And then, since then, the site was annexed into the city, and none of the proposed development from that EIR has occurred, but when this project was previously approved in 2017, there was an addendum to that EIR that determined that it was consistent with the findings from the original EIR. And then there's also a tentative map approval, tentative map, I believe it is 2019-4, and that is for dividing not only this site, which is the 40.8 acres, but it's a little over 100 acres into 60 industrial lots, and so there's also an environmental impact report for that tentative map, and this project would become Lot 1 of that approved tentative map. And finally, the Hollister Municipal Airport is directly west and south of this project site, and it will be, need to go through our Airport Land Use Commission for final determination that it's consistent with our Airport Land Use Commission policies. There are a few conditions that we'd like to change from the draft conditions in your draft resolution. Condition number 32 discusses barricades at roads that end at the property lines. We'd like to strike that as, and if you'll, if you'll see from the previous slides, there is going to be a roundabout at the end of the Burt Drive extension, which even when the tentative map improvements go through, that will be extended, replaced and extended with a street that moves through, so there won't, there isn't a need for barricades on this project, there's no streets that directly end. So we'd like to strike condition 32. Condition 35 talks about frontage improvements, again, due to the tentative map also having a current approval, there isn't a need for full frontage improvements along San Felipe Road, but the applicant will be required to underground existing overhead utilities, but we'd just like to strike the word "streetlights" from this condition. And then finally, condition 38 is similar to condition 32, talks about a non-vehicular access strip at streets that terminate at the project boundary. Again, we'd like to strike that condition because of the roundabout that's being proposed, the temporary roundabout. With that, staff would recommend that the planning commission review the applicant's request, receive all written and oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motion, adopt a resolution approving Site and Architectural Review 2019-21, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft report, but with the changes to conditions 32, 35, and 38 as described. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, Eva. Do we have any questions for staff from any of the other commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So is this gonna be just one tenant, a classed unit, or is there gonna be several tenants?
My understanding at this time is that it is one tenant, but the internal improvements, like the floor plan of it, have not been proposed, so it's technically a shell building, but my understanding is that it's one tenant.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Any other questions from the commissioners? If we have no other questions from the commissioners, I'd like to go ahead and open up this to public comments. And we'll open it up to public, or public comments at 6:18. If we have any speaker cards on this item?
We do have a virtual comment. Ann Hall?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. This is Ann Hall with San Benito Engineering, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. As Eva described, this is a project you've seen before, and we're coming back with it to try and move forward, we've gone through design, and it took longer than expected, so we are expired. Anyway, Mr. Nguyen is planning to move forward, we have, we don't know what these conditions are, staff. The only comment I'd like to make was, I think we also discussed this a little bit with the tentative map, is on condition 74, I'm not looking for a change, I'm just commenting that we, in the special staff, we agree that Mr. Nguyen is responsible for, any need to change the lift station that he causes, certainly anything he brings to the project that would cause the lift station to be upgraded, this is responsibility, but this lift station has any issues, and staff has agreed that they can provide information on recent projects and the plan for this lift station, so that we can make sure it gets designed to incorporate not only what Mr. Nguyen is doing, but possibly address their concerns for this lift station that has caused it to be on the CIP list for a while now. But Mr. Nguyen's responsibility is for the changes he brings to the lift station, but I think we've come to an agreement on that subject, and so we're good with the conditions as proposed, and if you have any questions for me, I'm available.
Great, thank you, Ann. Any questions for the applicant from the commissioners?
We have Kevin Henderson.
Yeah, so I think in the last meeting, which I wasn't at in January, there was the, I believe this was the same project that was discussed, and the subject of roundabouts came up, so it is, so is there any, do we know if there's gonna be roundabouts for sure, or is there gonna be kind of controlled intersection, like controlled intersection?
Yeah, if the engineer can answer that question.
Yeah, with this project, there is not gonna be any intersection control, roundabout or anything constructed, that's gonna be constructed with the tentative map. I think when Eva mentioned roundabout, she was actually talking about the temporary cul-de-sac at the end of Burt Drive.
Yes, sorry.
Did you hear that, Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, thanks.
Can I just say that I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing when people are speaking into the microphone, when staff is, I mean, Eva, but Todd, come on, spring, and then, yeah, so.
But you need your phone.
Oh, sorry. I'm just saying that I had a little bit of trouble hearing that, I'm not, I think there's something with the microphone, I'm not sure.
Commissioner Stevens will acknowledge that we'll do a better job of speaking into the mic, so that way everybody can hear, and then the engineer has also another comment in regards to.
Right, in regard to the lift station, and we will work with San Benito Engineering for any documents that the city may have, we will freely turn those over to San Benito Engineering to review and consider for any design that they come up with. However, San Benito Engineering is going to have to stand on their own to provide a design and analysis for that lift station, so any documents that the city has, we're more than willing to turn over to San Benito Engineering.
Great, thank you.
Can you have the engineer speak into your microphone, it'd be really hard to understand.
Okay, yeah, this is in regard to the lift station, any documents that the city has in their possession for that lift station from a previous draft design that the city had performed, the city will gladly turn those over to San Benito Engineering to consider as part of San Benito Engineering's responsibility and design of any potential upgrades that are necessary for that lift station.
Were you guys all able to hear that?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for either the applicant or staff? If there's no other questions, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:24, and bring this back to the commissioners. Is there any comments, questions from the commissioners? If there's no other comments, I will entertain a motion for this item. I will go ahead and make a motion to adopt PC Resolution.
2020-5.
2020-5, Approving Site and Architectural Review 2019-21, with the changes and conditions of 32, 35, and 38 as described. Is there a second on the item?
Second.
I have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That item passes, thank you. Moving on to item number two, Site and Architectural Review for Number 2019-20, and if we can have the staff report on that?
Okay, just give me one second to flip some papers around here, excuse me. Could I get the presentation, please? Are we gonna manually? Thank you so much. Alrighty, item two is Site and Architectural Review 2019-20, and the applicant is requesting approval for the construction of a two-story duplex on a 4,000-square-foot lot located at 1144 Street. The property is located behind an existing residential unit that is on a separate parcel, and this project property has access provided off of Hawkins Alley to the north. The duplex will be a two-story building with each story having a, or with each unit, excuse me, having a two-car garage on the first story, and a two-bedroom, one-bathroom, 588-square-foot unit on the second story. The northern front elevation will face Hawkins Alley. This building will be made of stucco with a composite shingle hip-style roof, and this elevation will have an exterior staircase leading up to a covered second-story entrance to Unit 2 of the construction, and there will be a small bathroom window and a larger bedroom window on the second story of the elevation. The western or right elevation, which you can see on the bottom right of your screen, will face the main driveway access to the property, and this elevation will have two recessed garage entrances for each of the units, and there will be a window for each of the second bedrooms near the center of the east elevation. The southern or rear elevation is on the bottom left of your screen, and this will be a reflection of the front elevation with the addition of a man door on the first floor, which provides access to the garage of Unit 1. And this access will lead into the private yard area for Unit 1, and it'll also direct, allow direct access to the entry staircase. And finally, the eastern or left elevation will have two large windows into the main living areas of the units on the second stories, and the elevation will also have a man door exit from the garage of Unit 2, which leads into the private yard area for this unit. Section 171806O of our municipal code requires one and a half parking spaces per two-bedroom unit, for a total of three required spaces, and this project is proposing a two-car garage for each unit, which meets this requirement. And for bicycle parking, there is a requirement of 10% of the required vehicle spaces, which amounts to one space for this project, and there is proposed to be a bicycle rack located under the staircase for Unit 2 on the north side of the building, and this meets the requirement for bicycle parking. There is a requirement for 500 square feet of open space for any multifamily unit, and that 500 square feet is divided between private and common open space, so the project requires a total of 1,000 square feet of open space for two units, and at ground level, each unit has to have 250 square feet of private open space. The applicant is proposing the private yards for each of the units to be located on the southern side of the building, and Unit 2 will have 252 square feet, and Unit 1 will have 320 square feet of private yard, and this meets the private open space requirements. And then there is remaining 428 square feet of required open space, and there is proposed to be a 525-square-foot open space area with a small seating area provided as a minor amenity at the southern end of the property, and that's gonna be accessible to both units, which also meets our open space requirements. This site is designated as medium-density residential in our general plan, and the, I believe that's actually incorrect in my staff report, it should be downtown mixed use in our general plan. So the 4,000-square-foot site can support between two and four units at 25 to 45 units per acre, and 25 to 45 is the correct units per acre for downtown mixed use, and so the project is consistent with the general plan. This property is located within our Alquas Priola Special Study Seismic Zone, however, pursuant to the Public Resources Code Regarding Earthquake Fault Zoning, the proposed development does not constitute a project as defined by the Public Resources Code Section 262.1.6, because the development is water-still frame structure. as defined by the Public Resources Code, section two-six-two-one-point-six, because the development is a water-steel frame structure. It's less than two stories tall, or two or less stories tall, and it's part of a development of less than four units. So therefore, it's exempt from the Alquas Priola Seismic Study requirements, which would be a trenching, um, study to determine if faults are present. So it is exempt from that. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission review the applicant's request, receive all written and oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motion to adopt a resolution approving site and architectural review application twenty nineteen dash twenty subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Eva. Any questions for staff? If we have, uh, no questions for staff, we'll go ahead and open up this item to a public hearing at six thirty-two. Any, uh, speaker cards on this item?
None.
All right, we'll go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing at six thirty-two. Any other comments, concerns from the, uh, commissioners? What is the, uh, the pleasure of the commission on this item?
I'll make a motion, um, so I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the site and architectural application twenty nineteen dash twenty subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution.
That's resolution twenty twenty dash six.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Congratulations on the site and archi-, site and architectural approval for twenty nineteen dash twenty. Moving autumn, on to item number three, minor subdivision number twenty nineteen dash four. Staff report?
Good evening. The applicant is requesting an approval for a minor subdivision, number, um, twenty nineteen dash four to subdivide a one-point-five acre lot into two parcels located at three fifty-fourth street. Um, the county assessor parcel number is zero five two one three one zero two one. It's located within the West Gateway zoning district. The project is located at the northwest corner of Fourth Street and Felice Drive, south of Pennacote Court. Um, parcel A is proposed at zero point five-two acres and is currently vacant with no proposed development at this time. Parcel B is proposed at one point zero-three acres and received an entitlement on June twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen for a site and architectural review two thousand nineteen dash nine to construct a nine thousand one hundred square foot, um, retail commercial building. This entitlement expires on June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, um, unless the city grants an extension. The City of Hollister's two thousand five through two thousand twenty-three general plan designates this site, um, as West Gateway. This designation provides for a series of parcels with neighborhood, commercial, and multifamily residential uses to provide a retail-oriented entry boulevard at the west entrance to the city near the San Benito River. The designation is intended to provide convenient services to regional traffic on Highway one fifty-six to encourage community shopping, retail, and offices with medium-to-high-density residential uses at a density of twenty to thirty-five units per net acre outside of the downtown Hollister area. This project is consistent with the West Gateway zoning. The West Gateway does not have a minimum required lot size. As previously mentioned, proposed parcel B has received entitlements. Parcel A has no development, um, proposals at this time. However, parcel A, proposed at zero point five-two, um, acres, can support ten to eighteen residential and/or commercial units. The one point five-five acre site, um, can accommodate up to thirty-one to fifty-four residential or commercial uses as allowed by the West Gateway zoning district. Um, for the access for this proposed project, the proposed parcel B would have access off of Felice Drive to the east and Pennacote Court to the north. Access, um, to proposed parcel A will occur through reciprocal access agreement, which can be seen, um, on your attached parcel maps. The reciprocal access agreement will connect parcels A and B from east to west and will extend across parcel A to allow for continued access to the west as future properties develop. This is consistent with the West Gateway guidelines for circulation in the general plan and the zoning code. A condition of approval has been added to the draft resolution that requires that the developer record a deed restriction on the property, which indicates that once access to Rakovich Way to the west becomes available through future development, the access to Pennacote Court to the north shall be eliminated. Um, so before making a recommendation, I would like to point out that we do have a few changes to some of the conditions that were in the draft resolution. Um, for condition number seven, as you can see on your screen, um, we will be eliminating the need for city council approval for, um, the parcel map package. Condition sixteen has been changed. It shall read now, um, on the parcel map, the applicant shall dedicate a reciprocal access agreement as shown on the tentative map. Condition twenty-six has been eliminated altogether. And then condition thirty-seven has been changed to now read, on the parcel map, the subdivider shall relinquish a butters rights along the Fourth Street frontage for parcel A and B, along a portion of the Pennacote Court frontage for parcel B, and along the Pintecate frontage of parcel A as shown on the parcel map. And with that, um, staff recommends that the planning commission review the applicant's requests, receive all written and oral testimony regarding the parcel, and make the following motion, adopt a resolution approving minor subdivision two thousand nineteen dash four subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution. Are any questions for staff at this time?
I have a question. Wasn't this the same property that wanted to build a General Dollar?
That is correct.
And so, and I guess I'm just confused, are they still planning on building that dollar general there, or are they mixing that, or?
So at this time, um, this particular proposal is to divide the lot, to subdivide the lot. I don't want to get them mixed up right here on which parcel, let me go back. So parcel B, um, is what will have the Dollar General, and that was the entitlements for a commercial retail business that I was mentioning earlier. Um, that is planned to still take place, they still have entitlements, they're going through the process of submitting, um, to development services. Um, and right now on parcel A, we do not have any proposals at this time. So this, um, what they're coming for tonight is to just subdivide the parcel.
Okay, thank you. So I have a question, um, are there, or would there be any, um, or anything that we should consider to do with impacts to the neighbors, to the businesses, et cetera? Is there anything that we should know about impact?
Um, s- sorry, can you guys hear me? There we go, um, at this time, um, so the, the impacts to be considered would be similar to those that we had discussed for, um, parcel B. However, as parcel A gets developed, um, Pennacote Court will be eliminated. So the traffic that could be, um, sorry. I'm trying to, um, so until parcel B is developed, um, they will still have access through Pennacote and through Felice, or Felice Drive. Um, once parcel A has something that is proposed to be developed on it, that's when we'll eliminate access at Pintecate Court. So the traffic that would have previously impacted it will no longer be going on to Pintecate Court. They will have access through Felice Drive and then through the parking lot. Um, I don't know if you can kind of see the easement that goes through the middle of the parcel. That's where the traffic will go eventually as parcel A is developed.
That's correct.
So are, so are they going to be allowing traffic in from Fourth Street, or are they just going through from Felice Drive?
Just through Felice Drive.
So they're, well, I, I remember saying that they don't want to have, um, any access coming in from the main road. So they're telling me that the people, if, if you are developing, it's available, it will be coming through from Felice Drive, not, I haven't, I haven't noticed that name.
Paincotty, yeah. That's correct. The engineering, the, uh, engineering department will be also speaking a little bit about that right now. Uh, Commissioner Johnson. But that is correct, you, you recollect correctly, the, um, City of Hollister, city council adopted a mitigative negative declaration for the West Gateway beautification, and, uh, essentially the, the areas from Graff Road all the way through West Side Boulevard, and that is one of the goals of the West Gateway beautification, to try to limit access from Fourth Street onto private property. And, um, the engineering department will talk a little bit, uh, more in regards to what, um, Amber was commenting regarding access.
Okay, so that, I, I know the biggest problem the residents have, they're worried about a lot of traffic.
Right.
They're worried about a lot of cars coming through their neighborhood. It's been a court for so long, they don't have any traffic.
Right.
I just want to make sure that I understand that there will not be access to parcel A from, to that shore, once it's developed?
Yeah, so, so right now, with the approval of Dollar General, access would be from Felice Drive, uh, which is, which is the, um, access that, um, uh, it is abutting the San Benito Health Foundation off of Fourth Street, and there will also be access from, uh, Paincredi, um, the cul-de-sac. And y- your recollection is correct, we did have, uh, various members of the, um, area come in and, and speak about their concerns, especially people who live on Paincredi, and, uh, one of the things that staff, uh, talked about at, at that planning commission meeting, and, and we're, we're also indicating today in our resolution within, within the conditions of approval is that for the, uh, Dollar General, the access would be Felice Drive, Paincredi. However, upon development of parcel A, which, um, consistent with our West Gateway, uh, zoning district, it can be a combination of a, um, high, high-density residential and/or commercial. So upon, upon that development, there is a condition of approval that would essentially eliminate the access from Paincredi, and it would only be through Felice Drive. And then upon future development of the parcel to the west, uh, essentially, the, um, the, there is a, a condition that indicates that the access would continue, uh, to the west and align with Rakovich Way, essentially not creating any new driveways along Fourth Street and maintaining that, uh, Rakovich Way-Fourth Street intersection.
So when, when parcel A is built out, does that mean that the Dollar General will no longer have, like, access to their parking lot either from Paincredi Court, or only from Felice, or will they still have access to, um, the parking lot from there?
Paincredi. Once parcel A is built, that, that's a really good follow-up question. Once parcel A is built, my understanding is Paincredi will then, at that point, be eliminated, and it would only be through Felice Drive.
And so it will only be for the residents who essentially have access to that parking lot, or I'm sorry, to that court?
Correct. The residents that are existing, single-family homes at this time, that are existing along the north side of Paincredi, that, that is correct. You're welcome.
Any other questions, uh, for staff?
Um, yeah, can I, I, yeah, I have a question. I'm not really sure, um, what the right question is. I guess I'm trying to understand the purpose of doing this, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure that I totally understand what they, because again, it goes back to, I think I'm not asking the right question. It's about the impact to the surrounding area. So what would be, what, what would be the effect if this was not approved? And what would be the effect if it is approved? So if we, if we authorized it, what would be the effect, and if it, what, if we didn't, what would be the effect? And I'm just trying to understand the purpose of this sub-subdivided, this particular property.
Thank you. That's a, that's, no, that's a really good question. That is a really good question, Commissioner Stevens. Uh, thank you. It's important that we clarify that because we, we understand, as well as you understand, and the neighbors in the area, that this is, uh, you know, there's, there's questions and there's concerns. And so essentially, for this evening, uh, all we're looking at is essentially splitting that one existing parcel into two. And so if, if it did not move forward with the subdivision, it would be essentially one parcel where, um, there is an current existing entitlement for one commercial building, which is the Dollar General that Commissioner Johnson was referring to, um, that, that had previously come before you at the planning commission. Tonight, essentially, would be, uh, a request for, um, for an approval to subdivide that one parcel into two. And the intent here, and we have the applicant, the applicant should be in the line as well, in case, in case, uh, we have questions for the applicant as well, uh, regarding their, their intent, but the, essentially what would happen is parcel B would be where the Dollar General would be at, and then parcel A would be a separate parcel with, with easements for access, uh, between the both for a, uh, separate parcel in, in regards to, um, future, future entitlements for that. So if some, somebody can come in later on, they can potentially sell parcel A to somebody else, and, um, that, that property owner can then build something that's consistent with our West Gateway zoning designation, which would be consistent to, uh, either or, commercial and multifamily residential. Um, because we have commercial already, it would be okay to have another commercial, um, aspect of it, or they can, uh, propose multifamily in the form of apartments or condominiums, townhomes, or they can propose another commercial, um, building there. But essentially, the, the purpose for today is for, uh, a request to split one existing parcel into two with the same access points as, as, uh, previously approved with the, with the, um, set and architecture of the commercial building.
Great, thank you, Abraham. Any other questions for staff? If we have, uh, no additional questions from the commissioners, I'd like to go ahead and open this up to a public hearing at six forty-nine. Do we have any, uh, speaker cards on this?
Doesn't, doesn't appear we do virtually or in person.
The applicant is waiting, but he has not, um, requested to speak, but I'm sure if there's any questions for the applicant, he's, he's, uh, in the line as well, just in case there's any questions.
Is there any questions from the commissioners to the applicant in regards to this project? Okay, if we don't have any questions for, uh, the applicant, or, uh, speaker cards on this item, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at six fifty. Any additional comments from, uh, the commissioners in regards to this item?
I just have a, just a comment. I would hope, uh, if we were able to do this, that the residents of the neighborhood that really did not want the Dollar General, um, because I know their biggest concern was traffic in their courts, because it has been a court for so long, and it's just the resident, um, that finding out that it.
that finding out that it may be closed off, I can't speak for them, but I would hope that maybe that would give them some relief a little bit, I guess, is what I'm looking for, that there won't be as much traffic on the road or in front of their own homes.
Yeah, I agree with that comment.
Thank you for the comment, Carrie. At this time, I will go ahead and ask what the pleasure of the commissioners is on this item.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-20-7. Am I correct?
Correct.
Approving minus a division 2019-4, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution, which changes to condition 7, 16, 26, and 37 as presented.
There's the motion, is there a second? I will second the item. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you, that item passes. Moving on to item number four, Site and Architectural Review 2020-4. We can have the staff report on that item?
Yes, we'll have our Development Services Division, Rose Redlich, come to the front and will present our item number for Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Thank you.
So the applicant, oh, good evening. The applicant? Oh, sorry. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair.
Can you hear me now?
Zoom should be able to hear, but it's zoomed out now.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. The applicant is requesting site and architectural approval to convert to existing multi-office buildings on a 12,873 square foot lot into three residences. And this is in the home office zoning district. The front primary building, which faces San Benito Street, consists of, is requesting, will consist of two attached residential units. Yes. And the rear elevations. Sorry, this thing is not working. There we go. And the rear existing building will consist of one residential unit for a total of three residential units on the property. Per the zoning code, the home office district allows multifamily residences. Additionally, the housing density for the home office district is eight to 12 units per acre. Therefore, a nearly 1,300 square foot lot can have up to three residential units. This makes the project consistent with the zoning code and the general plan. Right now, I'm showing the floor plans, the proposed floor plans for the main building. Unit A will be a two-story, two-bedroom house. And unit B will be a... Gosh, I forgot to put unit B. Okay. Unit B will be a one-story, two-bedroom house with a basement. The basement is going to be the second bedroom. I would like to note that one of the conditions of approval is to add an egress window to the outside in addition to the already existing door that is located on the outside. Another condition of approval is that the water heater in the basement be moved to an outside location per Building Safety Code. Unit C, which is located in the rear of the main property, is currently a two-unit building that will be converted into a three-bedroom house. With regards to circulation, currently, you can access the property from the north and exit from the south. The proposed circulation plan will allow for vehicles to enter and exit from the south entrance. I would like to note that a condition of approval for the proposed driveway is to provide a clear line of sight for the vehicles entering and exiting the property. Part of the north portion of the driveway will be closed off to accommodate the installation of private and common open space. Private open space will be provided in the form of a side deck for the unit to the south, a private, or front and rear yard for the rear unit and the unit to the north. A common open space will be provided in the form of a front porch and a common area in the rear of the main building. The proposed open space meets the square footage requirements per the zoning code. There are 10 existing parking spaces on the property. The project will reduce the number of parking spaces to seven, which still meets the parking requirements for the tenant and guest parking. One more thing I would like to point out is that there will be a trash enclosure located in the southwest corner of the property, which provides easy access for recology. There is also a bike rack, which can hold up to seven bicycles, also in the northwestern corner portion of the property. That concludes my presentation. Staff recommends the planning commission review the applicant's request, receive all written and oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motion to adopt a resolution approving Site and Architectural Review 2020-4, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution.
Great, thank you, Russ.
Are there any questions from staff? Are there any questions for the staff from the commissioners?
Yeah, can I, I was just wondering if you could say again how you access the property, how you exit? So it wasn't, it wasn't really clear.
So currently, there is an entrance at the north side of the property that leads into the back parking lot and then goes around and the exit, and you can exit at the south entrance. So the project is proposing that the north entrance be blocked off or closed off to be able to accommodate the installation for public and private open space. And so...
So then we would enter and exit to the same, like, driveway, I guess?
Yes. And that is why there is a condition to have a clear line of sight for the vehicles entering and exiting the property.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question. Who's, so if this is subdivided into, like, three residences, who's responsible for the upkeep of the front yard?
I don't know, Abraham.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Henderson. There is a condition of approval that would require that the property owner enter into an agreement indicating specifically how it is that the property owner will be maintaining the premises, the landscape, all the roads, any, any type of maintenance. It would be specifically detailed, it would be reviewed by staff. We would review it, make sure that we agree with it, and then we would require them to record it with the property so that way, the existing property owner or any subsequent property owner would be responsible to make sure that everything is upkept within the site. The renters, if there, if that is the goal, to rent the units, that would be perfectly okay. However, the property owner would be subject to the requirements of that recorded document, the maintenance, recreation of the maintenance for the site.
Thank you, Abraham.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff pertaining to this item? If there are no other questions, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item at 7:01. Do we have any speaker cards or applicant online in regards to this item?
Doesn't appear we have anyone in City Hall or virtually that would like to speak at this moment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:02. We'll bring it back for the commissioners to discuss this item. Any other questions or discussion regarding this item?
Yeah, I have a comment. And what kind of question? So I'm not, I'm not a fan of the rock in the front yard. And I'm wondering if, if, if it'd be a condition, you know, what kind of, if we could ask for any conditions about, you know, maybe upgrading the rock or something? Because, I mean, right now, it works for our business, but I don't think it's great for residents. So is that something that we can ask for? And if you have any, is there any suggestions on what we could, any suggestions from the commissioners about what we could ask for, if anything?
To answer your question, Commissioner Henderson, in regards to whether or not you can ask for it, absolutely you may. We actually do have a...
Abraham, Abraham, can you take, can you open the microphone? It's really hard to hear you.
Sure, sure. Commissioner Henderson, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, okay. I think it's better here in the front where we have the microphone, that's a little bit more sensitive. So what I was indicating is that, to answer your question, Commissioner Henderson, in regards to whether or not a condition can be applied, absolutely, it can. We actually have a condition that requires that prior to issuance of a building permit, that we receive a water-efficient landscape application that indicates a type of landscaping specifically, specific to the site, and that gets reviewed and approved by our landscaped architect on staff that we consult with, which is the Water Resources Association of San Benito County. And so if you would like to add, or the commission, if it's the pleasure of the commission to add to that condition that something in the likes of changing the front of, the front yard landscape to the desire of the commission, that's fine. Or for it to be changed from rock to another type of landscape to be reviewed and approved by the city, that would be okay as well. But the condition can be amended or changed.
Okay, thank you for that. So yeah, that's my opinion. I think the, you know, landscape should, it should be approved a little bit. It's fine from office to residential, but I'd like to hear, you know, the opinion of the other commissioners.
Abraham, can you say again what the expectation is for the landscaping plan? Is that like a better time to ask for something more specific rather than here? Or is that, or I should say not better, but is that another opportunity to ask for something specific? Or I don't really have a preference. I think it's fine, but I do think especially, like Kevin said, and like Commissioner Henderson said, it's residential, it's probably makes better sense to do something different. But I don't really have a preference personally. But I'm wondering if it's something that, that would be okay to wait for the, when they, when we ask for the specific landscape plan?
Definitely, Commissioner Stevens, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Very well. So what we ask for, Commissioner Stevens and Planning Commission, is we want to make sure that we, as the City of Hollister, are upkeeping or are conforming to the state's requirement for water efficiency. And as you can see, in a lot of new development, a lot of the front yards for residential and even the common open space for commercial or industrial establishments, you see that it's, the landscaping is a little different than before. Before, a lot of the single-family homes that were built like in the 90s or before, you see a lot of regular front yard grass. And we've, we've come to know that, I mean, we've known all along that that, for example, uses a lot of water to make sure that it's green. And so in 2011, if I'm not mistaken, there was a new, a new state legislature that came out that basically required that all new developments that were approved in cities in California maintained a water-efficiency type of landscape. And so because of that, or since then, we require that we see a landscape plan when we approve entitlements or prior to approving entitlements. However, the next step would be that prior to issuance of a building permit, that that plan comes in with specifics, the specific type of ground cover, specific types of use of bushes, specific types of trees. And we also want to make sure that we see a specific irrigation plan that shows us how much water is going to be used to make sure that the landscape is going to be upkept. And so there's, there's specific thresholds that we have to use that the applicant cannot go over to make sure that the water is, that not so much water is being used on the site. Because if you've, as we know, the Water Resources Association, Sean Novak, he commonly comes to the city council meetings and makes his presentations and indicates that the majority of water that's used in a property is mainly for exterior uses, for landscaping. And so that's why we want to make sure that we keep compliance with this ordinance. And he's actually our landscape consultant. So essentially, what would happen here is prior to issuance of building permit, the applicant will submit that plan to us. We will then send it over to Sean Novak for their review and conformance. So for tonight, if the desire of the planning commission is to have that landscape in the front changed from a rock type of landscape to something different, such as either maybe some bushes or some type of ground cover that's not going to use a lot of water, that's okay. And we can, we can either, you can either give us that discretion as a city to make that approval, or if you want something particular now, you can make that recommendation as well. I hope that helped.
I personally do not have a preference. I'm okay with leaving it as is. I'm also okay to hear more from Commissioner Henderson about what he might want to propose as a condition.
Um, so I'm just thinking, I'm okay with the, having the city landscape person that Abraham mentioned, you know, approve something. So I think the motion I would, I could, would make would be to replace the rock with some other, how you word it, quite water, water-conserving landscape. And that can be just, they can work with the city on that.
That would be okay if, that's the pleasure of the commission.
Commissioner Henderson, just for clarification, was that, was that a question that you were making or was that a motion that you were putting together?
I was just trying to verbalize how to word the motion, I guess. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve.
It'll be PC Resolution 2020-8.
2020 dash, um, okay. Okay, so I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution after we sign an architectural review 2020-4. Subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution, with the added condition that the applicant work with the city landscape people to replace the rock with some other water conserving landscape.
Great, thank you. There's a motion, is there a second?
Is it, I, I just want, can I make a comment? Or should we have wait for the second and then I make a comment?
Ideally, we would wait for the second and then make a comment, have a discussion after it's, after the motion is made and seconded. Actually, the commentary at this point could be limited to asking Commissioner Henderson to amend his motion. That's possible as well, if that's the direction you were going.
Yeah, yeah. I think I am, only because I, I, because I think that personally, I think that it's okay. The rock is okay. I think it would look a little nicer if there was some additional bushes or shrubs around the building. But it's also a personal preference, and I just, I'm concerned about putting a personal preference into a condition for somebody who owns this property. I think rock is okay. I, I see a lot of homes with rocks in front of them, and I think they will find if they add other, you know, kinds of shrubs and trees and things like that. So I just, I'm a little concerned about putting a condition at its preference and when I think it's just a difference of, of, you know, like what your aesthetic is. And I, I personally think it looks okay. I think it will look nicer with a little bit more shrubs and more bushes or some, a tree or something, but I think it's fine. So I, I was kind of thinking that, I, I, so the reason I asked the question earlier was I was thinking if we could wait until they worked with the city. Maybe they had a different idea for a landscape plan, but I think putting that at the condition to approve this, I'm a little concerned about that.
Okay, just to reiterate, there's a motion on the, on the, on the floor. Was that an amendment to the motion that you were proposing?
Yes. So the amendment would just be to make the motion without the condition, and then we would wait to, for the plans that, that they would put together with the, with the city.
So I'm not sure if that's an amendment or if that's just the original draft resolution.
Right, so it would just be an amendment to the, to the wording that you used, Commissioner Henderson, on your motion?
Yeah. Well, okay, so, so right now, as, as the resolution that we have now, is there any, is there any provision where the applicant works with the city on a landscape plan?
Where's the rock? Is it in the right of laws or not?
Or is, is it just, is it just going to be how it-
Different yard essentially.
Even if I agree with-
It's not front yard.
And I'm sorry, we do seem to be getting a little far field from, from amending or making a second here. Um, I, I think what would probably, in order to keep it everything as clear as possible at this point, what we would go for is to either, either look for a second of Commissioner Henderson's original motion, since he didn't specifically accept that amendment, or he could withdraw it. There can be further conversation, and then he could make the same motion, or a different motion, or anyone else could make a motion. That might just keep our, our chain of events a little more clear here. I'm suspicious that since I don't hear anyone making a second, that it probably fails for lack of a second.
Which, I'm, I'm going to call that this motion has failed for a lack of a second. So if there's anybody else who's going to make a motion?
I'll just make the motion to adopt the resolution approving site and architectural review 2020-4, is that right?
It'd be 2020-8.
2020-8, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second? I will second that motion. Is a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Okay, moving on to item number five, Site and Architectural-
Mr. Chairman, I, I apologize for interrupting. I didn't actually hear what the result of that was, the motion adopted, and then, and then what, what the, what the vote was. If we could state that clearly for the record.
Should we do a roll call?
Yes, this, this, if we can ask staff to do a recall, recall, or not a recall, a roll call on the vote.
Yeah, I would be only know if that verified it.
All right, so for the record, the motion was adopted three to one with Commissioner Henderson casting a no vote. Is that correct? And I'm sorry to be so picky.
That is-
Trying to make the record clear.
That is correct. Okay, moving on to the next item, Site and Architectural Review number 2020-2.
Good evening again, thank you. As mentioned, this item is for Site and Architectural Review 2020-2. The applicant is requesting approval for the construction of a new 20,000 square foot industrial shell warehouse building. This project is located on a six and a half acre site at 1258 McCloskey Road, north of McCloskey Road and east of San Felipe Road in the Light Industrial Zoning District. The shell building will contain four 5,000 square foot tenant spaces. Each will have a separate storefront entry as well as a restroom. The uses for the spaces are not yet known, but they all comply with the allowed uses in the M1 Light Industrial Zoning District. The project is proposing to improve 3.92 acres of the 6.52 acre site and leave the northern remainder undeveloped. The shell building will have a large open industrial yard in the rear with gated vehicle entry from the paved parking area on the east and west side of the building. And the yard will be fenced as well as screened with landscaping. The southern elevation, which is in the center of your screen, the front elevation, will face McCloskey Road and will contain four storefronts of the building. And the building and the roof will be made of metal. Each tenant space will have a glass door framed with two large windows on either side. And the storefront will have an awning and an area for a business sign above the entryway. And then each of the four spaces will also have a window with a planter and a trellis, which gives it more of an inviting commercial feel. And it's proposed to be lit with LED wall lights in between each of the entryways. The east and west elevations are plain painted metal facade, and they'll be largely facing the interior of the fence that surrounds the industrial yard. And then finally, the northern or rear elevation will have four large roll up doors, one for each of the tenant spaces. And this facade is also painted metal. And again, there will be LED light fixtures next to each of the doors. The project proposes a 35 foot wide landscape strip along the front edge of the property, which will house the stormwater management systems and is in compliance with our industrial standards. The front of the building will have the sidewalk, and the ends of the parking rows will be capped with a landscaping area on each end. There will be landscape screening along the eastern and western property lines for the length of the fencing that encloses the industrial yard as well. Pursuant to our parking code, again, one parking space for each 400 square feet of gross floor area for any of our general industrial uses. And this 20,000 square foot building requires 50 parking spaces. The project has proposed all 50 of those parking stalls. Three of them are electrical vehicle start, charging stations, and two are ADA accessible stalls. This meets our parking requirement. And it's assumed that company vehicles and equipment will be able to be stored in the industrial yard in the rear. And the industrial yard is about 200 feet deep and runs the entire width of the property. There was a mitigated negative declaration adopted for the larger unsubdivided area, and I'll back up here, of the six and a half acre site back in July 2012 for the Community Food Bank project. And that analyzed subdividing this property. The Community Food Bank was never built. So in last year, I believe, January 2019, the applicant proposed a 15,000 square foot building in this location. And so staff prepared an addendum to that original Community Food Bank MND, which determined that there was no additional environmental effects for building a 15,000 square foot building, kind of replacing the rear Community Food Bank building, which would have been on the north end of the property, with a new industrial building of about the same size on the south end of the property. And then at this time, before you today, the applicant is proposing to add on to that original approval from last January. And I do have an image here, which was a three tenant space building. So now they're proposing to replace that with the four tenant space building that's here for your approval tonight. And so we've prepared an additional addendum for the MND, which determined that there's no additional environmental effects as a result of this approval. So with that, it is consistent with CEQA. And staff recommends a few changes to our conditions as well. We would like to strike Condition 12, 16, and 28. They were standard conditions, and they're not relevant to this project. One is about maintenance of multifamily landscapes. And one is about existing sidewalks. The applicants requested that this be stricken because there are no existing sidewalks in the area, so staff agreed to strike that. And then one is about a trash separator, which is not relevant to the project. So we would propose that the planning commission review the applicant's request, receive all written and oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motion to adopt a resolution approving Site and Architectural Review 2020-2 with the removal of Conditions 12, 16, and 28 as described. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Eva. Any questions for staff on this item? If there are no questions for staff, we'll go ahead and open this up for a public hearing at 7:24. Any speaker cards or? No speakers from City Hall or the virtual room? Oh, we have one, sorry.
Rich Marcus?
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Rich Marcus. I'm with Marcus Building Systems here in Hollister. We are representing the owner group on this project. And as staff mentioned, the purpose of the recent middle of this project was based on, after the previous approval, doing the cost analysis for construction, the costs associated with all the site improvements, road improvements and whatnot, really didn't make it feasible to build 50,000 square foot buildings. So the owner decided to pursue this 20,000 square foot project to make the price per square foot more accommodating. So really, the only changes from the previous approval, as staff mentioned, was the addition of the 5,000 square feet and the adjustment to the number of apartment stalls. So if there are any questions for me, I'm available.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Any questions for the applicant on this item from the commissioners? If we have no questions, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:26. Any further comments from the commissioners on this? Okay, what is the pleasure of the commission on this item?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution 20-20-9, approving Site and Architecture Review 20-20-2, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution with removal of Conditions 12, 16, and 28 as described.
There's a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Congratulations on that item. And moving on to item number six, Site and Architectural Review 2020-5. If we can have staff report on that?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a site and architectural approval for the construction of a 2,250 square foot addition to an existing 6,150 square foot industrial building on a zero point acre lot. The property is located at 20 Hamilton Court, which is in the Light Industrial Zoning District. The proposed addition will be approximately 24 feet in height, 50 feet in width, and 45 feet in length. The exterior of the building addition will be finished in stucco siding that will match the existing building. The roof line of the addition is proposed to match the existing roof line in the rear of the building. The roof will have composite shingles to match the existing roof. The west elevation will have two roll up doors with two man doors, one on each side. The eastern elevation will have a single man door. The northern elevation is proposed as a one hour stucco finished firewall. According to the applicant, the existing portion of the building will continue to house administrative operations. The newly proposed portion of the building will house CNC drilling and testing operations. CNC operations includes drilling holes into copper panels, which is used in the manufacturing of circuit boards and the storage and staging of panels. There will be no chemicals or hazardous processing or storage at this time. Staff did want to note that pursuant to Section 1710-030 Industrial Zoning General Development Standards, there are no required front side or rear setbacks for parcels within the M1 Light Industrial Zoning Districts unless adjacent to a residential zone. The applicant's plans currently show a five foot setback. And let me switch the slides so you guys can see. This five foot setback is on the, between the north side of the property and the building itself. Condition number eight of the conditions of approval requires that upon submitting plans to the building division, the applicant will designate and label their plan set with current and future uses within the development. The setback is subject to change in accordance with the building and fire codes depending on the use of the addition, should it change. So the current parking will not be changing. Right now, they have 26 parking spaces. They are only required to have 21 parking spaces. In addition, they will be required to provide parking currently. There is no proposal for bicycle parking. Our section of the code requires that 5% of the amount of parking is taken for bicycle parking. That equates to one space for a bicycle. At this time, there are also no changes for the landscape. Parcels that are 15,000 square feet or more shall have a minimum of 10% landscaping. The current landscaping meets and exceeds this requirement by providing 12.5% landscaping. As you can see, the landscaping- As you can see, the landscaping will have a variety or does have a variety of covered ground covers, shrubs, and trees. The majority of the landscaping is located along the frontage of Hamilton Court and the eastern/western boundaries of the parcel. In addition, there are two landscape strips on the eastern portion and southern portion of the existing building. This project is consistent with the general plan. Their proposed in current use is circuit board manufacturing, which is consistent and concordant with the industrial designation of the N1 Light Industrial Zoning District. In addition, the property is located within the Zone 6 Traffic Pattern Area of the Hollister Municipal Airport Comprehensive Land Use Plan Safety Zones. As a condition of approval, this project will be taken to the Airport Land Use Commission prior to the issuance of a building permit to confirm that is consistent with the airport land use designation. And lastly, this project does not lie within the fault zone. However, it is within the 100-year flood zone. A condition has been drafted that requires that depending on the site and architectural approval, that the applicant shall provide evidence of the building permit plans and with a flood elevation certificate from a licensed civil engineer registered in the state of California, that the base elevation of the building and all mechanical and electrical equipment is one foot above the Federal Emergency Management Agency's 100-year flood elevation. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the applicant's requests, receive all written and oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motion, adopt a resolution approving Site and Architectural Review 2020-5 subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution. Are there any questions for staff?
Great, thank you, Emma. If there are no questions for staff at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for a public hearing at 7:33. Do we have any speaker cards on this?
Nothing, virtual or in City Hall?
Is that a confirm negative?
Are we okay?
Nobody.
No one.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:34. I'll bring it back for the commissioners to discuss. Any discussion on this item? I will ask what the pleasure of the commission is on this item.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt adopt a resolution approving Site and Architectural Review 2020-5 subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution 2020-10.
All right, motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, congratulations. Moving on to item number seven, amendments to Title 17, zoning to the Hollister Municipal Code. Does staff report for this item?
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me? Oh, great. Good evening, commissioners. Staff is requesting to amend miscellaneous sections of Title 17, zoning of the Hollister Municipal Code to assure internal consistency, identify permitted uses, and implement standards in the Hollister Municipal Code regarding where cannabis facilities may be permitted and regulated as already intended by the code in the Commercial and Mixed Use Industrial and Airport Support Zoning District. In June of 2019, council was presented with a request of approval of amendments for commercial cannabis uses and other text changes. These amendments were based on public comments and input from the community at the May 13, 2019 Town Hall meeting. On June 17, 2019, City Council adopted Ordinance 1179, which amended Chapter 542 Cannabis Facilities Regulatory Permit of the Hollister Municipal Code. The proposed amendments to Title 17 will identify where cannabis facilities may be permitted by conditional use permit as already intended by Chapter 542 Cannabis Facilities Regulatory Permit in the following zoning districts, Commercial and Mixed Use, Industrial Manufacturing, and Airport Support Zoning District. The proposed amendments to Title 17 assure internal consistency of land use designations that have been previously approved. The proposed amendments to Title 17 will identify, oh, excuse me. The proposed amendments to Section 1708-020, Commercial and Mixed Use Zone Land Uses and Permit Requirements at the Cannabis Facilities to Table 1708-1. The cannabis facilities which may be permitted by a conditional use permit in the north gateway are cannabis cultivation, delivery, dispensary, distribution, manufacturing, nursery, and testing. The west gateway are cannabis cultivation, delivery, distribution, manufacturing, and testing. There is an additional use regulation note number 28 that will be added, which will refer to Chapter 542 for regulations and provisions for cannabis. The proposed amendments to Section 1710-020, Industrial Manufacturing Zone Land Uses and Permit Requirements at the Cannabis Facilities to Table 1710-1. The cannabis facilities which may be permitted by conditional use permit in the Light Industrial and the Industrial Business Park are cannabis cultivation, delivery, dispensary, distribution, manufacturing, nursery, and testing. And there is an additional use regulation note number seven, which will refer to Chapter 542 for regulations and provisions for cannabis. The proposed amendments to Section 1712-030, Land Use and Permit Requirements for the Airport Support Zoning District at the Cannabis Facilities to Table 1712-2. The cannabis facilities which may be permitted by conditional use permit in the Airport Support are cannabis cultivation, delivery, dispensary, distribution, manufacturing, nursery, and testing. And there is an additional use regulation note number five, which will refer to Chapter 542 for regulations and provisions for cannabis. These cannabis facilities are consistent with Chapter 542, specifically with Section 542-160, cultivation, nursery, dispensing, manufacturing, distribution, delivery, transportation, and testing locations. With that, staff recommends that the City of Hollister Planning Commission review the request, receive all written and oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following motions, adopt a resolution recommending, excuse me, to the City Council the adoption of the amendments to Title 17, zoning of the Hollister Municipal Code. That concludes the presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? If we don't have any questions for staff, let's go ahead and open this up for?
I do have a question, Commissioner Monser. Sorry, just made myself.
Go ahead.
My question is specifically, it's not on the resolution or on the staff reported it, but it's more, it's from the actual ordinance. And I was just wondering if someone else could actually explain the, the, I guess it's a condition, I'm not sure what it is, but the 5.42.170, letter C, which is, which talks about who is allowed to enter into a dispensary? And I was just surprised to see the one exception to the rule around about no one under the age of 21. But there's an exception if an individual is a qualified patient and accompanied by his or her licensed physician care, documented legal guardian, or designated caretaker. So I was just wondering, under what circumstance would that be necessary? Like where a person under the age of 21 would need to go into a dispensary accompanied by somebody that's listed there? I'm curious about why that in the ordinance.
This is Maria. I'm the cannabis affairs manager. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good, thanks. So that was specifically drafted for medical patients. So according to the state regulations, patients that are, or are 18 cannot go in the dispensary according to our rules unless they have a, excuse me, a medical card. Or they can also come in if they are, if they're specifically coming in with a, a person that is disabled or whatever and that needs medicine. Does that make sense? And it's specifically for medical purposes?
Even if it's only for those people that are adults, like for 18 or 21? Because the way it reads here, it just says, no individuals under the age of 21 shall be allowed in minute lists who pass or accompany them. So are you saying that it's only people that are over 18? That that applies?
If they have the medical, a medical card.
Okay, but I don't, okay, so that's not my question. And my question is, do they have to be 18? So they have the medical card and they're, are they 16 with the medical card?
No, they have to be 18. So for the state regulations, they have to be 18.
Okay, so the way that I'm reading this particular part of the ordinance, it doesn't say that. It says under age 21. It doesn't say between ages 21 and 18. So I was a little, I was a little concerned about that because I was like, somebody who's 12 can go in there if they have a medical, they're on a card, if they're accompanied by somebody? So you're saying that this only applies to someone who is a legal adult? Right, so they're over 18, but under 21, if they have the card and they're accompanied by a person that's listed there?
That is correct, yes. And like I said, it's also, it's regulated the same way by the state. But perhaps, I mean, it could be clarified further? And it could be something that we can work on amending later on in our business ordinance?
Okay, so I think what you're saying then is word says unless the individual is a qualified patient. So qualified patient definition, qualified patient is they have to be 18. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it was, I wouldn't mind if I had that in there only because when I read that, I was like, well, does that mean somebody, anyone under 21? But I just, you know, I think it would make it cleaner if we could put something like that in there that just said qualified patient made up, maybe in parentheses, age 18. Or maybe a definition of qualified, what qualified patient means. I think that would make it cleaner. And I know that that's not part of what we're doing today, but I just read that and I was a little like surprised with the language. And so I was just hoping that that could be, that would be clarified. I mean, if it's 18 to 21, I think that's fine. And that should be, that should be clarified.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Stevens, for that comment. And I don't think we have an issue with including that. If it's, if the city attorney, I'm not sure if he's still there, Jason Epperson, if it's okay that we just include that as part of our recommendation to the city council, that we wouldn't have an issue in taking that recommendation.
Of course, I am still here, and yes, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you, city attorney Epperson.
Any other questions for staff regarding the item? If there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and open this for for public comments at 7:46. Do we have speaker cards or anybody online that is wanting to make comments on this item?
No. No speaker cards and no virtual comments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:47. In regards to amendment on this, are you, is staff looking for a motion or a recommendation?
Adoption of a resolution which is recommending the change of the ordinance amendment. And if it's a desire of the commission to also change 542-170 subsection C as indicated by Commissioner Roxanne, that would be okay.
Okay. So what is the pleasure of the commission on this item?
Yes, so all I'm going to ask is that after the words qualified patient, that in parentheses, the definition be included so that it's clear that we're talking about 18-year-old, years, year-old people and older, not just simply under, anyone under 21.
Commissioner Stevens, would you like to make the motion?
I'd like, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution recommending to City Council the adoption of the amendments to Title 17, zoning of the Hollister Municipal Code, and add the definition, add the definition of qualified patient to Section 5.42.170, letter C.
Great, thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the item? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. That item passes. That concludes the items on the agenda. Moving on to new business?
No business.
No new business? Any old business?
There's none old business at this time, Commissioner Monser.
Any Planning Department reports?
We do have a few Planning Department reports that we would like to address today. If it's okay, Chairperson Monser, members of the Planning Commission. Briefly, we would like to report that we are happy to announce that the City of Hollister has initiated its general plan update process to develop planning documents that reflect the community's values and priorities for the future of our precious community. The City of Hollister has launched a website dedicated solely to the update of the general plan. Let's see if we can try to look at the actual front page or homepage of the website. And that can be accessed by typing in Hollister2040.org, as you can see on the screen before you. And we urge all Planning Commissioners, all members of the public to please, please, please log in, type in Hollister2040.org, and please spread the word. The general plan update is a highly participatory process. The website is equipped with a background link, which provides information on the importance of the general plan. As you can see, just right below the header, there is a background link. And that provides information of the importance of the general plan. It also provides a public engagement link, inviting users to engage in the general plan update with online activities such as requesting the user to share their vision of Hollister. What the user likes about Hollister? what the user likes about Hollister, and what the user wishes Hollister had in our community. Engagement link also provides the user the opportunity to rank key issues such as affordable housing, traffic congestion, adequate public services, disaster preparedness, job opportunities, high-quality schools amongst others. So there's, there's a, there is an attempt to reach out to the public virtually to see, you know, to let us know, we want to hear from you, what it is that you prefer and that you rank as high, from high to, to least in our community. There's also a link with existing documents such as the existing adopted general plan, along with the existing adopted housing element that we have, and also the Hollister zoning code in the document section of our website. So there's plenty of information. There's a link where people can contact staff directly with questions, and also they have the ability to be notified, be placed on a list to be notified of our next events, any public press releases, we can send that information if they log into Hollister2040.org. There is a calendar link which provides for important meeting dates such as G-PAC, future meetings, future planning commission meetings that are going to address general plan update information, and also future city council meetings that will address general plan update information. Also, the calendar addresses workshops. So speaking of workshops, we would like to address the council and indicate, the planning commission indicating that the city will have four upcoming workshops, beginning with one on Saturday, June twenty-seventh, this Saturday, at ten AM. The next one will be Tuesday, June thirtieth, at six PM. The following one, the third one, will be on Wednesday, July eighth, at seven AM in the morning for the people who were, the, the morning people, who would like to maybe come in and log in virtually before, maybe before going to work. And then the fourth one would be on Thursday, July ninth, at six PM. So there's four different opportunities to get the public engaged, and they're all four of the same presentations, but just four different opportunities that we would like for the public to participate in. And also very importantly, we would like to mention that the website is, is in English, but there's also a link to also get the information in Spanish as well. What you see in front of you on the screen is also a Facebook page that we started as well in collaboration with our consultant, who has been really great, Placeworks Inc. And there is also a Facebook page, so please log into Hollister General Plan Update Twenty Forty. Please give it a like, please give it a thumbs up, and please share with all of your contacts. So that's, that's the general information in regards to our general plan update. Two other brief things, also very important. Our next report is that we would like to introduce our newest assistant planner by the name of Areli Perez. She's the one that just gave the presentation of the zoning amendments for the cannabis. We are happy to introduce her. She is the newest member of the City of Hollister Planning Department. Areli is an assistant planner for the City of Hollister, which began here in the city, starting, she started in March sixteenth of this year. Areli is a graduate from California State University, University Northridge, where she obtained her bachelor's degree in urban studies and planning with a focus on city and regional planning. Areli has previously worked as a planning intern for the City of Lancaster, and more recently for the town of Los Gatos, as a transportation planning intern. And she is currently enrolled in San Jose State, working towards an education certificate in community development finance and affordable housing. We are really happy to have her on board. Thank you, Areli.
Welcome.
Well deserved applause for her. And also last but not least, we would like to share with you that the City of Hollister received a letter from the State of California Housing and Community Development in regards to the City of Hollister City Council adoption of the Residential Growth Management Ordinance that was adopted back in October of two thousand and nineteen. When it was adopted, the city council directed staff to also send a copy of the document to HCD for their review. We want to make sure, the council at that time wanted to make sure that the program was adopted in a way that we would maintain our certified housing element. It's really crucial and really important for the City of Hollister to maintain a certified house, housing element, which, which we do. Just, just very briefly, certified housing element and the planning departments upkeep of the certified housing element, doing their annual general plan progress reports to the state essentially provides for the opportunity to receive grants. Just recently, the City of Hollister received a little bit over six hundred thousand dollars in grants, just because we have a certified housing element and just because we have updated the state in a year, yearly on our progress reports. We received a little bit over six hundred thousand dollars for the improvements that were made to McCarthy Park. And that's just one of very various examples that we as, as a community can benefit. And also, different organizations that are, for example, nonprofit throughout the community also benefit from the City of Hollister having a certified housing element, because a lot of the times, there are competitive grants and the organizations that are out there that can apply for these grants, a lot of the times, the state requires that the city has a certified housing element in order to make them compatible or competitive for these organizations such as the Community Food Bank, Hovenez Antonio, to be able to apply to these grants and be competitive. And so, very important to keep that certified housing element. And so, it was sent to the State of California Housing and Community Development Agency, and we heard back from HCD on May twelfth, the letter basically indicated that at this time, due to the governor's adoption of the Housing Crisis Act, that a growth management ordinance or a growth management program cannot be adopted or cannot be implemented at least until twenty twenty-five. And so, the letter also indicated that the City of Hollister shall place an item on the agenda for the city council to rescind or suspend the ordinance. And so, that was given to the city council at its last regular meeting, and the city council actually had some questions about the ordinance that were sent to HCD, and the hope is that we will get a response from HCD and provide it in our next regular city council meeting of, of, of August. So just wanted to give you an update of, of what's going on with that. And the reason why I say next regular city council meeting of August is because the city council adopted a resolution essentially not having any type of city council meetings, unless, unless it is an emergency council meeting for the month of July. And that also goes with all planning commission, parks and recommission. So just as enough FYI, there will not be a planning commission meeting in July because of that resolution. So that concludes the staff reports for department reports. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you for the update, Abraham.
You're welcome.
Any reports from the commissioners?
Abraham, I have a question for you on the, on the website, the Hollister Twenty Forty website. So the thing that you said about the Spanish language piece where they, they have, they can go to a link and it'll take them to a Spanish language document or whatever, is it mirroring what you see if you're looking at it in English, or is it something, will they look at something different?
That's a good question. It, it is, it was really crucial when we did the scope of work and when we adopted the, the contract with Placeworks, that it, it was, it was highly crucial to also be able to produce the information in Spanish as well. So, so the links, the information of what the agendas will be and what will be the content of these workshops, these meetings, will be in Spanish. For example, if, if the public clicks on documents and they want to see the existing general plan, the existing general plan is, is in English, it can take them to, to where to download the existing general plan or, or some of these documents. But, you know, unfortunately, some of these documents, like the housing element, the general plan are in English, so those will remain. However, all other information in regards to what the next, the upcoming meetings, what the meetings will be about, the workshops will be about, the agendas, all of that will be in Spanish.
And, and I'm assuming then, they will also have the ability to make, make their comments, to answer the questions about what you like about Hollister, what you don't like about Hollister, so they'll be able to do that as well in Spanish, right?
I'm glad you brought that up. That, that's absolutely right. And my colleague Eva, at this time, is, is actually putting on the screen the, the Spanish version of the general plan. At the top, at the top of the homepage, there is a link where, where it indicates the language. And so by clicking that link into the Spanish aspect of it, you'll see the translation of it. And so, yes, you're, you're absolutely right that, that it will be, the information will be in Spanish, and that if any member of the public would like to type in any type of information in Spanish, we would, we would highly recommend that they do, and that they submit it in Spanish, and we would love to, to get it in Spanish as well and be able to incorporate it in, in the update of the general plan. So the, the answer to your question is absolutely yes. I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Roxanne.
And so then it's like a similar question for the upcoming forums that are scheduled for forums. So how will the translation in Spanish be handled for those meetings?
Very well, yes. So the forums that we will have, we will have them all because of COVID nineteen, unfortunately, it's, it's a big, it's a big deal because, you know, these, these we would wish to have more in, in person. However, because of COVID nineteen, they're, they're going to be Zoom, they're going to be all virtual, and there is a, there is a link on the, on the program, on the Zoom program, that our consultants will be managing, which will provide for the ability of any, if there's any Spanish speaking only, or there is a lot of people who actually understand English and, and can speak it, however, they feel more comfortable in Spanish, and we want to provide that, that aspect of, if they want to, they want to listen to the workshop in Spanish, we will have a simultaneous translator and, and link to where we will have a member of staff provide the, the same information that's going on in English simultaneously in Spanish.
Okay, good. What I can hear now?
Great, you're welcome. You're welcome, Commissioner Roxanne.
I have a question for Abraham.
Sure.
On, on the website, well, not, I could see, I have a question about the visiting, the visiting workshops that are coming up. I didn't see any on the website that tells people what's going to happen or how to prepare for it. So, I don't know, maybe if you know what's actually going to be happening and how someone has to prepare for it.
Sure, sure. So under the public engagement link of the website, and also actually in the front page as well, two, two different, two different links, but if, under the public engagement aspect or link of the, of the general plan update website, there will be, there's information that basically talks a little bit about what, what the workshops are, are going to be about. And essentially, what, what they're going to be about is our, our consultant, David Early from Placeworks, who's also a instructor at UC Davis Extension, will be giving, will start out by giving an overview of what is a general plan and the importance of a general plan. And so with that, he will also facilitate with, with the members who are registered, and hopefully we'll have a good enough turnout so we can break, break into small groups. Each group will have a facilitator, and some of the questions that these small groups are going to be able to dialogue amongst the groups are, in English and in Spanish, are, for example, what type of values should guide the decisions, the future decisions for the City of Hollister? Also, what are the themes or what are the topics of major importance that the City of Hollister's general plan update should, should take into consideration? And last but not least, describe your vision of the City of Hollister for the year twenty forty. So these are going to be broken up into small groups, we're going to try to hear from everybody, and then we'll have a facilitator provide that feedback back to David Early, who is the project manager, and we will have all that information provided, packaged up, and presented at our next general plan advisory committee that is tentatively scheduled for August. And so that, that's kind of a summary of what we're going to be having for this Saturday. This is going to be scheduled for one hour and a half, however, it can be as, you know, as, as fast as one hour depending on, on the flow of everything, or maybe it can go a little bit over an hour and a half, but the, the meeting is actually scheduled for an hour and a half.
Great, thank you, Abraham.
You're welcome.
Any, any other questions for staff?
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no, no other questions, next planning commission meeting is Thursday, August twenty-seven, at six PM.
I actually have, I'm sorry, the planning commission reports, we weren't able to discuss it, but I attended the League of Cities conference back in, right before they shut us down. So I want to say, I want, I want to appreciate and thank you guys for allowing us to go because I learned a lot from that conference, a lot of eye-opening information, a lot of camaraderie learning about other people and how other cities are working together, and some of the speakers they had were absolutely outstanding. The gentleman that ended the series of the, the conference, that last one, he really was a phenomenal speaker, and a lot of the stuff that he said still resonates, and I still remember, you know, four or five months later, that, I was really impressed, I was really impressed with how it was ran. And I will appreciate and thank you guys for allowing us and figuring out how we can get, get there. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioners Johnson. Did anybody else attend that?
I did too. I totally, I did. And it's, it seems, it's so crazy because it just seemed so long ago when we went, and it seemed like the world was completely different at that time. But it was a great conference, and I, and I also want to appreciate staff. I, I didn't realize that we haven't had an opportunity to do that because we haven't had a meeting since then, so I'm glad that Commissioner Johnson remembered to say that because it was an absolutely incredible experience. And, and things are so different now. So it, it's, I thought about how the conference might have been different if we were in the middle of the pandemic when we attended, and if we would have attended virtually, but it was a great conference, learned a lot, and, and it was well organized, and I'm just really glad to have had that experience. So yeah, lots of kudos to the, to staff for that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to report that I, I attended, also attended the Caltrans League of Cities Planning Commissioners Conference, so I think, I'd like to thank staff for sending us all there, and I did learn a lot and had lots of presentations. And I also wanted to comment, I am, I have looked at the general plan website, so I'm, you know, trying to participate a little bit in some of the activities they have there. I did share on social media about the visiting workshops coming up, which I got zero likes, but, so I don't know as much hype in out there for, for these, but I hope that the public can, you know, feel a desire to participate and actually participate. And as far as the G-PAC, it's unfortunate, I just want to comment, I, I'm, I'm sorry for that Commissioner Stevens wasn't able to be appointed to that commission. I mean, we have, I think we had a, a really good and fair transparent process for, you know, selecting, you know, Commissioner, David Dubois and Commissioner Stevens, so it's unfortunate that the, you weren't able to be approved for that. And it doesn't seem like there's going to be any, any move to add another planning commissioner. So I'm So I just wanted to, I, I think it's even more important that we get the public involved in the visioning centers. You know, let, let committee members. And it doesn't look like there's any plan to act by it at the time. So that's all I wanted to report on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for the update on that. Any other reports from the commissioners? All right, well, next meeting is Thursday, August twenty-seventh at six PM. I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys have a good night.